Okay, well, we'll get started. We're having a little bit of technical difficulties for those online. Evelyn, roll call, please.
Trustee Weekly.
Present.
Trustee McAvoy.
Present.
Trustee Wells.
Here.
Vice President Lawson.
Here.
President Marquez.
Here. Thank you. Again, welcome everyone to another River City School Board Meeting. It is June 21st and for those that need Spanish interpretation. Si requiere interpretación al español, por favor llame al 978 990 5137 y presione 8377041 y el signo de número para la contraseña. For the public, they are encouraged to speak to the board on issues of concern whether or not the issues are on the agenda. To address the board, please complete the speaker's card here if you're in person and give it to Evelyn to my left. And if you are online, if you can please fill out the Google Sheet. You will be called to the podium at the time of the item is being considered by the board. If the item is not on the agenda, you will be called to the podium during oral communication. Public comments are limited to three minutes per person per topic unless otherwise noted. Are there any changes to the agenda? Okay, hearing none. Can I please get a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
I can all this in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you. Evelyn, do we have any oral communication?
No oral communication.
We thank you. Moving on to item six, Fund Program Consent Items. Are there any questions?
Can I just make a quick comment? Consent, but can I make a quick comment on this one?
Sure.
I just wanted to note that the budget that was approved was for one of the lower campus play structures. We were able to replace that lower campus play structure and the swing set. And we're also able to include the demo of the upper campus TK play structure, which was a sandpit, I understand, was problematic. And we're also able to include replacement TK play structure and the soft safety, safety surfacing under the TK play structure at the upper campus within the budget that was approved.
Great, thank you, Will. Somebody wanted to make a motion to approve?
Yeah, I'll move to approve. Second.
All this in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Item eight, discussion items. Year and assessment result discussion. Thank you, Will.
So tonight, I'd like to open up our evening on data. As you see, we've got three different presentations that we're going to be sharing with you tonight. We've got our iReady data that compares our fall to our spring data. We have our CASP data, which is just recently released and still not 100% released, but released enough that we felt that we could bring this information to you. And we have the parent panorama data, which is also fall to spring comparison. And we have the good fortune of having Jenny Tran, who is our coordinator of data and assessment, who has put together all of these presentations, be the person who is presenting to you, and she will be presenting online. And I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. And turn this over to Jenny.
Hi, everyone. Everyone hear me? Good? All right. So this is some time limit. We just have a lot of data to look at tonight. I'll just jump Ryan with the iReady reading assessment. Next slide. So here is the demographic makeup for the iReady assessment. If you wonder, the old way is like for you to go back. Next one. This is the chart to show you the percentage and the change in the overall placement between fall and spring for reading. We can see some good increases in the two upper placement level and some decreases in lower placement level. I will show you more specific data for each of the placement level for the next couple of slides. Here is the percentage of the student who are mid above level, broken down by grade. You can see the significant increase in the percentage between fall and spring in primary grade level, first grade through fifth grade. And also to note that majority of our kindergarten did not take the fall diagnostic test. That's why the orange column that represent the fall performance is missing for kindergarten. Next slide. For the early on grade, here's the percentage reduction. Next one. For the one grade level below placement, and there are not that many changes between fall and spring, except for first grade. Our first grader make do did a good job moving out from the one grade level below. Next slide. For two grade level below, we see some good shifting of percentage in placement between fall and spring for grade one and two. Also here to note that kindergarten does not have two grade levels below placement. Next. Here we can see that all our student groups are doing well in term of moving out from the three or more grade level below placement between fall and spring. Here we see that kindergarten and first grade do not have the or more grade level below. They're not applicable for them. For second grade, we currently do not have any student in this level. Next slide. Here's the change in low placement level for the district. The gray scale represent the percent of student who did not make any change between fall and spring, whether they are below grade level or above grade level. The green area represents the percent of student who went up in level placement. And then the orange red area represented percent of student who went down in placement level. Next slide. For EOP student, they did not do so well. At 60%, of them did not make any change in placement level between fall and spring for reading. Next one. 70% of our student with disability also have the same train that they do not have any change in placement between fall and spring. Next one. And also similarly, 71% of our homeless student group did not make any change in placement level between fall and spring. Next one. For economically disadvantaged student group, this group has the lowest percent of student who did not make any change in placement, which is the positive note compared to the previous three student group. However, this group is has the highest of the student who went down in level between fall and spring for reading assessment. Now that we see how each of our group is doing in term of the changing in placement, the next couple of slide, we will look at our student annual growth. Next. So this chart may look a little bit intimidating, but let me break it down for you. Our LCAP goal three is monitoring student progress using their annual growth. And I'll have say that for each of the River City student, we will, they will make at least one year growth in their EOA and math. And then student who are below grade level, they will make 1.5 year growth annually. So this chart provide you with information on where we are with that goal. The area in red represent the percent of student who did not meet any annual typical growth. And you can see that across grade, first grade to eighth grade. Kindergarten does not have this because they did not take the initial fall diagnostic, so we could not measure their annual growth. The area in green represent the percent of student who meet one year annual growth. The area in blue, whether it's dark blue or light blue, represent the percent of student who meet at least 1.5 year annual growth. And also because the LCAP goal specifically addressed the growth of the student who are below grade level. Therefore, there's a separation in the metric here for dark blue, which is student who are below grade level and make 1.5 year growth versus the light blue are the student who are on above grade level, but make at least 1.5 year growth. Overall, we see that in reading, our upper grade students are achieving more growth than lower grade students as there are more of them achieving at least 1.5 year growth than just one year. And then more than 50% of our grade three to eight student are meeting their annual growth. Okay. Next slide. Here is the charts that will show you how each of our student group, English learner, student with disability, economically disadvantaged, and homeless student are doing in term of meeting the annual growth from year to year. And we have three years of iReady data. So the district growth data is always present in red color. All of our student group are performing below the district average with a homeless group, which is the bottom right corner, have the biggest gap in percent of student needing annual growth compared to the district, the red line. Next. Next slide. This is the last little data on reading assessment. I want to show you how each of our race and ethnicity group is doing compared to district average. One thing to note on this is that due to a small number of students who are identified as American Indian, Black African American, or Hawaiian Pacific Islander, the growth of couple of individuals even can significantly cause the graph to shift, you know, drastically. That is why are you seeing a sharp increase or this decrease in the chart for those three group. However, for you know, the LCAP and the county purpose, we have to present their performance here in this chart. Okay. And so we could see that most you can go ahead, go into math. That's good. So this is the demographic format. There's a slide for it. If you wonder what is the makeup for it. Here's the district math over our performance in fall and spring. So for math, majority of our student are below grade level placement with the highest concentration is in the one grade level below. Next slide. Looking at the each of the placement level for the mid and above, it's very good to see here that here's some, we can see some high increases, especially from grade one to fourth, where the percentage of student who are on this level double or triple from fall to spring. Next slide. Not as much changes here on the early on grade level, but there are some good increases for grade two through four with at least 5% increase in the number of student achieving this level between fall and spring. For one grade level below, very similar to reading, our first grader are doing well, moving out from one grade level below, but not so much changes for upper grades. Next slide. For first and third grader, they're making big progress, moving out from two grade below placement. Next slide. All grades level are generally doing good, moving out from three or more grade level below between fall and spring in math diagnostic. Next slide. So here's the change in the math placement level makeup for the district. You're familiar with the color code right now. So between fall and spring, we have 50% of our student did not have any change in placement. 42% went up in level and 5% went down in level. Next. For English learner group, most, if not all, of the student who were below grade level did not make any change in math placement. And 40% of our EOP student went up in level. Next one. Student with disability has 40, 55% of them did not make any change in placement level and 31 went up in level between fall and spring. Next. Majority of our homeless group student did not show any change in placement. But interestingly, this is the only student group that does not have any student went down to or more placement level between fall and spring. Next. Our homeless group students seem to be doing a bit better than the other three student group in math assessment with the lowest percent in student who did not have any change in placement, which is about 54%. And then they have highest percentage of student who move up in level between fall and spring in math assessment. Next slide. So here's that intimidating chart again for the math annual typical growth. In general, our student growth in math is a bit lower than reading with only grade six and grade eight has a little bit over 50% of student meeting the annual growth. So if you look at the chart for sixth grade and eighth grade and look at the the non-red area, they just a little bit over 50%. The rest, the rest of the grade level, their red area is more than the green and blue area. Next slide. So here's the chart to show how each of our student group again is doing in term of meeting the annual growth for math assessment. One thing that stand out from this graph is our, how our homeless student, the bottom right graph is not progressing along with the district performance in math assessment. And you can see that the gap is kind of wanted, getting bigger a little bit since last year to this year. Okay, next slide. So this chart again is showing how each of our race and ethnicity group are doing compared to the district performance based on the percent of student who meet the annual typical growth. You can see that the, the, the first one is American Indian. There's a suddenly sharp, you know, increase in the percentage. That is because we have a very, very few number of these students that have this race ethnicity. So the change in one or two student performance can cause the graph to jump like that. But typically, all the other ethnicity group are showing a decline in percent of student need annual growth. However, that grow is going along with the district growth. Black African Americans group, however, seem to have been making consistent growth for the past, you know, two years. Okay, that is all I have for the iReady reading and math assessment.
I think the question is, do we want to discuss after each set of slides or do you want to wait until the entire data presentation is completed? Because there's two more sets of slides. Keep going. Okay.
Okay. Can you share this slide for the cast, right? Okay. And next slide, sweetie. So here is the participation demographic breakdown for students who participate in this past year smarter balance English language assessment test. So the score, as Liz mentioned before, are were released about 90% on June 11, the data I pulled is data for the presentation. So CD will be releasing the rest of the score throughout the summer. So the final result might or may not greatly affect the numbers that we've seen today. So one thing to note from this slide is that the this year participation rate for our English language art is 97%. Next slide. Here is the overall achievement in EOA, broken down by grade level. So you can see the line that going across, so above it are the percent of student who meet or exceed standard. Below it are percent of student who did not meet or nearly meet the standard. So it seems like our seventh grade and eighth graders are doing better than other grade in, you know, meeting and exceeding standard. Very high percentage of our fourth and sixth grader are not meeting standards. Next slide. So this chart is showing you how each of our student group is doing as well as the achievement gap compared to the district average based on the percentage of student who meet or exceeded the standard. So the dotted line in the middle where it's close to 50%, that is the 49% rate that we, our district have for achieving need and exceeding standard in English language art. There are some achievement gap here. You can see for some student group, especially for English learner and student with disability compared to the district average. Next slide. This graph show our district EOA achievement throughout the years, going back to the first year that CASP started, based on the percent of student who need or exceed the standard. This graph kind of help, remind, help to remind us that there is that disconnection in the two years of assessment due to the pandemic. So overall, we're not where we were before the pandemic, but it seems like we're heading in the right direction with the 4% increase in the mass student meeting or exceeding standard compared to 21, 22. Okay, next. Here is our EOA achievement with throughout the years by disability status. The, again, the district average performance is always in the red line. Performance person with disability is represented in the orange line and a student with no disability, their performance represented by the gray line. We can see that the student with disability has been performing below the district average and there's a big gap. But this student group is having some modest increases in the percent of student need and exceeded, exceeded the standard throughout the past couple of years. Next slide. Here is our EOA achievement through a year by economic status. The economically disadvantaged student group performance is represented in blue. So it is below district average, but they're going along with our district growth. Next slide. This chart is a little bit busy, but it gives us some very helpful information on how our EOA achievement through the year by student language proficiency. So again, we start with the district average line in red. The English learner group is in blue, which is the last line in the bottom. And then we have English learner who we classify as an English fluent speaker represented in yellow. The student who are multilingual and but fluent in English are presented in gray. And then we have English only speaker performance represented in orange. As the first line, we can see easily spot that the English learner student in blue are not doing so well compared to the district and any other more English proficient student group. And you can also see that the gap has widened a little bit this year between our English learner with the district performance. Next slide. So here is the math participation demographic for this year and our participation rate for math is 99%. Next slide. Here's the overall achievement for math broken down by grade level. For 22, 23 school year, majority of our student are performing below standard across all grade level except for third grade, which has the lowest percent of student who are below level. Next slide. Here's that another graphic that represent the achievement gap between the student group compared to the district. So the district line is the dotted line at the 40% of student need exceed standard. The math achievement gap is similar to the EOA achievement gap with one additional student group with a large achievement gap, which is Black African American. We have 13% of our student who are met or exceed standard. So that is 27% below the district average. Next slide. Here's our math achievement performance based on percent of student met or exceeded throughout the year. We are currently at 40%, which is again 4% higher than last year. Next slide. Here is the performance by student disability status. Consistent with their EOA performance, the math performance for student with disability in the orange line has also increased since the last year and actually is the highest we've seen since the start of CASP testing for student with disability. Next slide. Here's our math achievement through the year by economic status. Our student in this group in the blue color is making very slow progress, but they're heading on the right direction. Next slide. Here's that busy graph again with the math achievement throughout the years. A similar pattern that we saw in EOA achievement, but math achievement is generally lower. So from the top down, multilingual student who are fluent in English, the gray color is appearing a sharp decrease in percentage. While the English only student in orange has a big increase in achievement. The group of English learner who were reclassify, which is represented in yellow, show a slight decline achievement between last year and this year. Our English learner student, the blue line performing, their performance kind of stabilized around 6% to 7%. So overall, the math achievement gap is why between English learner and the district as well as other English proficient student group. Okay, that is the end of the CASP performance presentation. Do we move on to panorama?
Yeah, I think, I think go ahead and do the panorama as well.
Okay, so next slide. So this is informational slide for those who are not familiar with panorama. So basically, the total percent of the two most positive answer will be used to calculate what we, we mentioned during the whole presentation, the percentage favorable response. Okay, next slide. So we, this is the count for how many student participate for each of the survey. So we have survey for grade three, fifth, and then survey for grade six, eight. Next. So here's the overall survey result in our topic for grade three to fifth. Most of our topics favorite score went down compared to the fall. However, we still above the national average on most of the top. Next slide. Here's the overall survey result for grade six, eight. Compared to the fall, all our favorable score went down significantly in some topics such as school safety, teacher-student relationship, and school climate. We are below the national average on all of our six through eight survey top. Next. Now let's look into how student survey results are for each of the topic. For school belonging, our favorable response are declining for both of the grade group. But especially for grade six through eight. And in general, grade three to fifth seems to have a higher favorable response than grade six to eight in all of our topics. Next slide. School climate. These are again, general, there's a decline in favorable response for both grade group. Next. Our school engagement topic is very low at 24% for grade six to eight. So you know, only 24% of our student in grade six, grade feel attentive and interested in school. Next slide. For school safety topic, we continue to maintain good response for grade three to eight, but very sharp declining in response. But very sharp declining in response from grade six to eight to sorry. You know, we got crucial bond for grade three to fifth, not six three. Next slide. Similarly, in our school teacher-student relationship, grade three to five again show high favorable response and maintain it at the low seventy throughout the years. Why grade six to eight favorite response is between forty to fifty and it seems to be declining. Next. School rigorous expectation. In general, this topic has the highest favorable response in all the topics for both grade three, fifth and sixth eight. So we are seventy two for grade three to five and then sixty two for basically six to eight. Next please. So here's the response by student group and broken down by grade level. So for those who are not familiar looking at this chart, an example is if you look at third grade, the first number plus nine under school belonging topic. It's mean that the the average third grader is giving nine percent favorable score higher than the district average. So the district reference right there is showing sixty two percent. So if you have a third grader, third grader group with plus nine, that mean that group in that school belonging topic, they score seventy one percent. Okay, so in general, third graders show more positive response compared to grade fourth and fifth. Next. In here are the response broken down by race ethnicity. We can see it right away Filipino and white student show more positive response compared to other race ethnicity group. For black African American, they show some positive response in certain topic than other. Next slide. Here is the response by student language proficiency, language proficiency. So you can see that EL have some more negative response compared to the other English language, English only or reclassified student. Next please. Here is the response by students disability status. So for this topic, student with disability score a bit lower than the district average in like school safety topic. Okay, next slide. This is the response by student economic status. In general, the students who are not in economically disadvantaged status score more positively than students with economically disadvantaged status. Next slide. Again, homeless favor score is significantly low than district average, especially in the teacher-student relationship for grade three to fifth. Next slide. All right, so this is the very same slide, but for grade six to eight. Interestingly, we see here seventh grader somehow have a lower favorite response than their peers in the majority of the topic. Next slide. For grade six to eight, Asian students seem to have higher favorable response and African American students show lower favorable response compared to district average. Next slide. Here's again the response broken down by English proficiency level. We can see that, you know, the English learner also have less positive response compared to other language proficiency group for grade six to eight. Next slide. Here is the response by student with disability status, grade six to eight. Next slide. Here's the favorite response by student economic status. This is pretty similar to what we see in the grade three to fifth survey also. Next slide. For homeless student, grade six to eight, favorable response is low in two topic, which is school rigorous expectation and diverse diversity and inclusion. And that is it for the student survey. We move on to the family survey. We have about close to fifteen hundred responses. Overall, our family survey response also went down in spring compared to the fall. Not so much, but we went down. Next slide. We are currently at seventy two percent favorable response for the school safety topic. It is a decline from previous years survey administration. Next slide. Our school climate response is at seventy two, though it fluctuate in the low seventy throughout the years. Next slide. Culture awareness and actions is the new topic that we survey in the recent year and it's been stable around with fifty. Next slide. Family engagement. We are currently at twenty percent favorable response, which is lower in the spring which is lower than the fall, which was at twenty two percent, but in general, we are higher than the previous spring of the twenty one, twenty two school year. Next slide. So here is the next section is the survey for school teacher and staff. We have about two hundred teacher and staff respond to the survey. So this is the result for the classroom teacher survey. In general, our classroom teacher so good responses between the fall and the spring survey. And we're on bar with others nationally. Okay, next slide. For non-classroom teacher, we have received lower favor response score compared to the fall, especially in the staff leadership topic. Next slide. So here is how each of the groups are doing in the school climate survey. Classroom teachers show consistent trend in having positive response while non-classroom teacher respond kind of fluctuate between the administration. Next. Similar trend is found here in the staff relationship topic for both group of staff. So we have classroom teacher consistently increase, non-classroom teacher kind of fluctuate up and down, up and down. But we are currently at sixty five percent for non-classroom staff. Next slide. For the staff and family relationship, we seem to have, you know, a good positive response, seventy two for classroom teacher and sixty two for non-classroom staff. Next please. So for culture awareness topic, for classroom teacher, we are at mid fifties and non-classroom staff, we are at thirty six percent. And that is the end of the panorama survey presentation.
Thank you Jenny for the presentation presentations. Are there any questions or comments?
Well, just chiming in, thank you so much for all the hard work that went into this. It's really wonderful as a data junkie to be able to see these clear graphs and new depictions of the kind of progress that we're making and the baseline from which we can make further progress in English and math. I'm very excited about the new English and math curriculum. There'd been a narrative about performance increasing and then a big setback with COVID and then performance resuming. And it's really nice to see that sort of verbalized narrative emerge into the actual concrete data details here. So I just, I feel like we've made huge strides forward as a district in terms of how we present our performance and there's a lot of work to do, but there's also a lot of great stuff to celebrate that's in here. So thank you Jenny for the work here. Couple notable highlights, like huge gains for disabled students in math on the cast was really great to see. And just overall, the secular growth curves, like the S back ELA through the years, very clear visualization of the progress and the COVID setback and the resumption of that progress that hopefully we see really accelerated up into the right with the new curriculum. So yeah. Lots of other stuff to dig into, but this is, this is a wonderful starting point. So thank you so much.
Yep, thanks for putting the data in their presentations together on all three of these subjects. You know, I think also in the, you know, in the LCAP, I think does it actually a pretty good job of summarizing what are the successes that come out from the data and we'll talk about the LCAP later, of course, on the successes that we can see in the data, particularly like the fall to spring growth that I already was showing, which I think is is pretty good. And the year over year growth that CASP data showed for for most students, I mean, they're clearly, and you know, again, right from the LCAP, it's like there's still a large gap for student groups, for several student groups, it's in there, we know. That's true for reading, that's true for our math. And I think we knew that, I don't it's not great to see it. I think we knew it was going to be there. And I know that we have the changes in place for a new math curriculum coming. I know we have changes for how we are newcomer center for next year and how that's organized and structured. We have changes for the way reading is going to be taught now. First year of changes, you know, I don't know what, you know, it's like, who knows what's going to happen there, but but you know, we'll watch them, you know, we'll learn more about them. We already learned about the math curriculum and we adopted it, the reading program. Newcomer, the newcomers center school at the program and those changes sometime in the fall when school resumes. So that'll be good to hear. We'll be able to keep tracking it. There's positive growth in there. I mean, obviously, as you had pointed out, we're behind where we were before the pandemic, as is probably the whole country. But we saw the trends that were happening, looking at the CASP data that had been going on before the pandemic and we can see that there's, you know, the same yearly growth. So I believe that we're doing the right things, the right stuff are coming in. Changes are being made because we know that more needs to be done and I think we just need to keep continuing in that direction.
Just to add on to what you just said, Mike, yeah, there was an article that came out by the New York Times just today that talks about the test scores for thirteen year olds and how they've they're the lowest they have been for thirteen year olds in a really long time, but it's across, across the country. I don't think any of this data is surprising. I really appreciate all the work you put into it Jenny. I enjoy digging through it all and and just looking at all the different pieces you put together for us. So I'm looking forward to the next few years to see the changes that we expect we will see in a good way. So.
First of all, thank you so much Jenny. I guess I can see you this way. Really appreciate it. All the work that you put into this, it's, it's a lot and there's a lot to go through. And then thank you Liz for your leadership and all of this. I really appreciate it. You've done just such a great job. And you know, I think every year, you know, we want to see more progress than we see, particularly, you know, we look at the I ready and the cast. But I think it kind of goes back to, I mean, we knew it, we read it in the New York Times, we're not alone in this. And I'm hopeful that we will continue to to move in the right direction. And I really hope that this data, you know, the the principals and the teachers are really looking, looking at their individual students and then having those conversations with the students and the parents and the family members, right? Because we need, we need all of our family members to be engaged and supporting their student, we need the students engaged. And you know, it's pretty clear, some of the groups that we have that achievement gap, and I agree that in the LCAP and in other resources, we're trying to to put into the system, we are trying to support our English learners, our economically disadvantaged, our special ed students, some of those groups that are clearly have an achievement gap. I think it's a little, it's a little harder with some of the ethnicities where we have such low numbers, you know, again, I just what I know is happening is we need for the teacher to be engaged in an individual student basis, right? Because we can kind of look at this collectively and make some decisions as a board, but ultimately, at the end of the day, it's about the student and how they're progressing, right? So anyway, we are seeing trends, some of them going, you know, we're sort of trying to catch up and move in the right direction. I will say on the climate survey, I was a little bit surprised and you know, disappointed that we didn't make some of the, that it didn't look a little better than it did because it went down and it, and in some cases it went down from the fall. And so I don't know exactly what that's about. And we also have to look at the, the number and you know, who filled out the survey because we didn't have a hundred percent. So it's a little bit different than the cast and the I ready where we've got closer to a hundred percent. So that, but again, I think it's really important just for the principal and and then the teacher in turn to really be looking at their data and then thinking about how they they can improve that, right? Because I'm sure every school site, every classroom has those areas where they're doing really well and those areas where they could do better. But it's really important to me around the engagement, the rigor, the belonging, I mean, all those things we know. If we don't see improvements there and students still engaged and and included, we're not going to see the growth that we need in the academics, which is, you know, at the end of the day, why, why we're here. So I just want to encourage us to really encourage the principals and the, and the teachers and the staff to really be looking at that panoramic data. I mean, I know they look at the academic data, that's, that's a given, but really do look at that panoramic data. I think it's, I think it's got really important information. But again, it's kind of on this gross level and so we've got to dial down to a smaller subset to really make some growth. So anyway, thank you everybody for everything that you're doing and I, I do want to give a shout out. I know that we have some of our teachers and principals and staff on the Zoom. So thank you very much for all that you're doing. I know how hard you all worked this year. And I hope everybody gets a little rest and relaxation to, you know, get ready for, for next year. Anyway, thank you. Just
Sorry, I just have some comment for Alisa. So for the student survey, our participation rate is about seventy eight percent. For the family survey, so I catapult some numbers and we have fourteen hundred responses. That is about thirty two percent of our number of household in our district.
Yeah, yeah, thank you for that clarification. So actually, the students you said were seventy eight percent, yeah. But that's, that's good to know on the family because we didn't have, I don't think we had that percentage. So but so, so again, that's, that's, that's lower than I think some years we've seen and it would be nice to get that bumped up. I know in years past, you know, we've been out there with the survey. You know, so anyway, it'd be interesting to look school by school and maybe some schools did a better job than others and we could look at best practices as to why some of the schools did a better job than others. So maybe we can encourage, you know, a look at, at the participation rates and again, kind of just share best practices on how to, how to get more information. And I'm sure our, you know, community schools could help as well. They have a good relationship with the families.
I mean, to it, I think one of the big surprises for me in that data was the, the COVID dip in family engagement and then you, okay, you can come up with the story with why that happened, but one would then presume that it would, it would come back up on the other side of it and seen no meaningful recovery. There was surprising to me. I don't know if we have a narrative or exploration as to like why.
Well, I wonder if that's, that's somewhat in the thirty two percent because I know when I've been on campuses and chatting with, you know, staff and parents, I mean, there was you know, parents and family members were able to be back on campus and, you know, I just don't know, but it's a good question.
Do you have other proxy numbers for this, like metrics on the number of parent volunteers who are qualified to be on campus, just?
Well, I know the community school, you know, we did get some data from them about engagement, but I don't know on the volunteers, that's a good question. You guys probably have that.
I'm sure the schools have it, but the other thing that, you know, we've noticed and why we've switched the manner and how we're doing, you know, the superintendent's advisory committee now, where to get more input from our base side of families, it has been really, really low coming forward out of the pandemic compared to what it was previously. And so we have to look at that and look at it and shift it in a different direction and by us doing it all in Spanish, and I know We have to look at that and look at it and shift it in a different direction and by us doing it all in Spanish, and I know. Cecilia is there with me. I think we get more of people that are interested, people that want to be involved as opposed to when we were doing it. In English and it was being translated and there's a. The research says there's a lot lost when you do that. So, and I think the comfortability and the rapport that we have when we're speaking the same language, it's a different ballgame.
That makes a lot of sense. I'm also curious about like the ways in which these families' lives are different in twenty twenty three versus twenty nineteen. So just any color on that would be very helpful.
And I think just with their engagement, they're actually seem to be very happy to actually know that we're doing this in their language. They're actually bringing a friend where that probably had never, not never, I don't want to speak like that, but. It didn't happen before. And then whereas even for me as a Latina. Working full time, my preference is in the evening. Had, has always been, and that's always been kind of my thinking. However, for this moms. They like it in the mornings because they drop off. And I don't know what, you know, work wise, but. They're there and they're like, yeah, I actually rather come to the cafecitos because then maybe for them too, it's harder for them to come in the evening. With childcare and dinner. And so, you know, things have definitely changed, but I think we're moving in the, the right direction. Definitely.
You know, one of the things I'll mention, I was going to talk about this in the board report, but we did have a Redwood City Together. Three hour kind of retreat meeting that we have in May. And Cecilia and Dr. Baker and I were all there, but one of the things some of us were talking about is possibly. Because Redwood City Together has been very good at raising money this year, there may be some money there to help do some data. Analysis using the Gardner Center and some of that could, so you know, we can maybe try to think about, is there some additional? Data that we could gather, you know, around the engagement, around what more we could be doing. So anyway, I know that. Raphael was interested in that and I think Amy and we are so, so. You know, I think when we craft what we're going to do, because one of the things we talked about is, you know, we did this years ago as we looked at, you know. All the different programs that we're providing. And get a better sense of which ones seem to be actually moving the needle and which ones maybe are not. And we haven't done that in ten years. It's, I mean, I, I. I mean, we've done it in other ways, but we haven't done it with the Gardner Center data, I don't think. Anyway, you're correct. Right, right. I mean, we have done it in other ways. Obviously, we're doing metrics around programs and stuff like that. But I mean. Yeah. So, so I think there may be some opportunities to. To think about that. Yeah.
You know, another thing that I've observed during this meetings that we've had in Spanish is their, their vocal, whereas. In our English only or translation meetings. They tend to hesitate a little bit before they ask any questions. So I think it's feeling comfortable. So, you know, again, it's, it's great. So, yeah. So, and again, thank you, Jenny and Liz and everyone that put all this data together. I know it's a lot of information. And of course, I'm happy to see the growth. We definitely have some growing to do, but again, one day at a time and we're all very hopeful. I think just my, my question when looking at the data is when we, obviously the EL students are performing not. You know, as district wide. But do we split the English learners by ethnicity? Or how do we actually say English learner? So there's. Newcomers and there's English learners. Are they're all in the same bucket? And not to say that all the English learners are Latinos only, but are we splitting English? Learners. And by ethnicity Latinos, how do we lump those? Students in. And if you guys don't have the answer to the question, I'm happy to get that response back. It's just. As you guys were speaking, it just, I just jot down the question. So.
So I know that I already dated is not disaggregated by the language that the students speak. And Jenny, I'm not sure in the casp if it does that either, or if it's just a designation of English learner and cast.
Anything can be done naturally. So basically. So basically, the language proficiency and the reason you see is in the past presentation is not an I ready. Because the same reason they say in I ready system, we did not have that piece of data integrated or sent over to I ready. So they don't have that. But for cast, when I get the score, they do have the student language proficiency. That's why you see. EL R five, R five. But if you're interested in seeing how EL students are doing broken down by their language. I could always merge that language information and, and then. You know, disaggregate the data that way.
Maybe it doesn't have to be the language, but like newcomers. Are newcomers to, you know, they've been here for months or a year, whereas English learners, we could have some English learners that have been here. For two or three or four years and where they. You know, and again, if you don't have the answer, it's just, I thought I'd bring that up because it just interests me as you guys were, you know, you were giving the presentation.
I, I just wanted to second that, that I think it'd be super interesting to perhaps at some later date. Get into what is the newcomer experience here? How are they doing, you know, and what kind of progressions are they seeing?
We're definitely seeing the growth with everyone and I, I think it would be. Maybe good. I don't know how much data, I mean, Jenny to not give you any more work, but. You know, what is the difference? Is the growth happening with English only? Because the ones that have been here for two or three years are actually growing, but what's happening to the English learners? It could be the English learners are moving forward. Again, from my personal experience, I was in this country for a year and then they moved me up to mainstream. I didn't want to, but they said I was ready. So again, it just, it's different. So again, if you don't have the answer, I don't want to put you on the spot. You guys can give us the information at a later time. And then with the student panorama, again, it's, it's good that it's. You know, seventy percent again for the parent engagement part. We are seeing some parent engagement growth. Obviously, it's just a little. Not as much as maybe we were thinking. But I don't know if things are different after two years of pandemic. How many parents are actually like, I know, like I had an eighth grader. And I, you only saw me at meetings, right? And back to school night, but I didn't. When they're in middle school, you don't interact. As much as you did when they were in elementary, right? But then that, that's just personally. And the other thing is, do we offer the panorama in English only, or is there an option for Spanish? Yes.
It is offer in multiple languages. So I think they use Google Translate. So when the parents or the student login. They can choose the language that they want to take the survey and it's available in a lot of languages, not just Spanish.
Okay, great. Thank you. And that was it. For me. No more questions, comments?
No, I just want to say thank you, Jenny. Thank you, Liz. And the principals, we'll all be looking at this data more when we come back. All together, we're back together in August. And so Jenny, you'll be probably asked to disaggregate this data differently. When we meet. So thank you so much for, for all of this. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
You're all welcome and have a good night, everyone.
Great. Moving forward with item nine consent items. If there are no questions, can I please get a motion to approve?
So moved? Second.
All of us in favor?
I. Evelyn, I wanted to say thank you so much for getting the minutes done so quickly and. Great turnaround and thank you, Mike. I think you're the secretary, right? So you're reviewing them. Anyway, really appreciate it.
Yeah, I second that. Thank you, Mike, for getting those back to me so quickly.
So item ten, public hearing and ten point one is public hearing and discussion of the local control accountability plan LCAP for twenty twenty three, twenty four.
Okay, the moment we've all been waiting for.
Certainly.
So. As a friend of mine who works up in San Mateo used to say. This isn't our first rodeo, right? And so we've seen this before. And so a lot of these are slides that have been repurposed to. Give you information about the latest version of the LCAP, which does happen to be year three in our three year cycle. So. Just as a reminder, we are holding this public hearing to get any recommendations, comments from you, from the public, if we need to make any changes to the LCAP before it comes back to you for approval. Next week. We will be looking at the budget and the budget overview for parents as part of our, the budget overview for parents as part of the LCAP. As part of our state requirements. And then, like I just said, we will be passing all of this hopefully next week. And then right after that, I send it into the county office for review. The county office has reviewed this already and has given their temporary seal of approval. So that's great. So a few of you know, because you attended these meetings, we had four stakeholder engagement meetings that were held February, April, May and June. Where we were in the process of developing the third year of the LCAP, making any changes. Which weren't significant to what we had already planned for the LCAP, but we took a look to see what was working. Based on the data that we had, what did we need to add based on what we knew from? Just what was happening over the school year and making those changes to the LCAP. So we had a very active group that was representative of all of the groups that are required by the LCAP. And a very robust student voice that was also expected this year, more so than others. And we had. Sarah Aguilar, who works with me and Whitney Aiken, who is one of our coaches, do a very robust approach towards. Going to every single school site and asking students for their input on the three goals. And we took their input as well as we considered what changes to make to the LCAP. And we kept our three goals again, because we had set these goals with targets. Three years ago. And so each of these goals has metrics that we updated. And not all the metrics show up here. This is just a reminder that this is available to be found in the LCAP. And. We're probably not reaching our desired outcomes in some of the cases, but we didn't change our desired outcomes because they were targets that were set three years ago. We'll have the opportunity this spring to relook at all of not only the goal, but our targets, what our metrics show at that time and we set all of this for another three years. So for goal one, and again, there is some repetition of this from the information that you just saw. As there should be, right? This should be aligned, our LCAP with our data. So with some of our high points for this past year is that our suspension rates went down for our homeless and our foster youth groups. Our chronic absenteeism, while still high. Seems to have improved at least five percent for the district for every student group, except for our students with IEPs. And we know this is an area that continues to be of concern. This came up a lot at our LCAP meetings and we are continuing to work on this. In improving our attendance, school wide, district wide. And our school climate also shows a high point in grade three to five. We just took a look at the panorama survey. So there are pages of continuing actions and services, and these were just some of the high points from that. Want to call out that in our conversations with our committee and particularly from the students and our D lack. The need for increased tutoring came up. And so we definitely have put more, we've allocated more funding to tutoring. The college advising prep is the tutoring that is taking place at four of our school sites. We're going to be increasing. The numbers of students that that group can work with because they're, they, they're the ones that presented the night of the community schools. They've shown great growth with their approach towards tutoring. And one of the reasons we believe that has made such a difference because the students really like going to this tutoring. Is they have developed a social emotional component to their work and they do a lot of training of their tutors in that. So that there's a strong relationship built between the tutors and their two Ts. Most of them. Yeah. And they go through a pretty significant training period, but I think it's, it's, and so as do most tutors, right? They really. You're not just walking in and tutoring so that they're getting either, and they also use their own curriculum. So they've got curriculum, they've got. Support and, you know, training, but it's also about development of a relationship with the students. So we are looking forward to continuing our work with them. In addition to all of these other components. That we will continue to work. Another area that has increased. And we look forward to having a presentation on this with you, probably also in the fall. Is our electives that are being offered. We mentioned this to you when we talked about Prop twenty eight. And we will be, we've been meeting with our STEAM teachers and our site administrators. And today. We had a meeting with our site administrators about their music program for next year. We're super excited about that. And how all of our students in our district are going to have access to more high quality electives. As part of the engagement. Initiatives that we have in order to have students want to come to school as a way to combat absenteeism. So these, many of these are components that continue and be happy to answer any questions for you in just a second. Goal two is our, our goal for our English learners that they, within five years that they reclassify. And that they also grow on the LPAC a minimum of one level for each year that they're in school. And we have some information about the numbers of students who have done that. So at the time this slide was made, which was maybe a week ago, there had been students reclassified. Leslie Danieli is on the warpath to. Reclassify as many students as you can by the end of this year, because we know the, the importance that that has in, particularly for students who are exiting our district in their placement in. In the high school. So we are continuing to reclassify students, even though they're not in school anymore. She's still going through their data. And is working very hard to make sure that that happens. And she's, if you have questions, I know she's online, it's available to answer any additional questions. But we had forty, one hundred eighty eight reclassified within the five years of enrollment, which is our target. Forty two reclassified within six years. And then we have students who reclassified longer than that, but these are students who. Reclassified after the LPAC was suspended for a period of time. So there was a period of time that the students could not have reclassified because we didn't give the LPAC. Right? And that was during the pandemic and then the year after that. We do have a number of new things in this goal that we again, can spend more time talking about. We can give you a presentation about the newcomer program. Which is a tiered program that will identify students as they enroll. About their level of need and place students either in self-contained classrooms for newcomer programs or into more of a mainstream classroom, bilingual classroom. With additional support, whether that be ELD support, whether that from a certified teacher. Or if they're ready for classroom support with instructional assistance. So we're developing this, hiring people for this right now. Catherine Rivera is going to be overseeing that. In her new role as our ELD categorical director, and she's just all in. And, and working on this, planning this, getting the curriculum for this, planning training for the teachers. And so it's going to be a very strong program, new again at the beginning, although it's similar to something we did a long time ago. But we are going to be housing it at Garfield because they have some empty class spaces for next year for the. The tier three, which is the most intensive layer, but then. Most of our other schools will have the tier two and the tier one services. And we will again, give you a lot more information about that. In the, in August, when the program has gotten started. We are continuing to provide out of ratio ELD teachers so they can keep a low class size. At our schools that have large numbers of EL students and that's primarily MIT Kennedy and Hoover. We've added extra teachers to those sides to, to work in small groups for ELD. We are providing ELD materials and are purchasing them for all grade levels. We are probably not going to roll it out until people ask for it at the very beginning of the year, because in the primary grades, we are rolling out reading and math. And if we roll out ELD on top of that, we're not sure that the capacity. Will be for anybody to take on one more thing, but for the teachers who are in probably grades four and up. We are planning. Professional development for them with these new ELD materials, because they don't have as many new things that they're going to be taking on right beginning of the school year. So we're planning that and Catherine has also been in. Communication with the, the people who do the. Training for language power, which is going to be our new curriculum. And so we're also planning these professional development and you've heard in the past about our integrated units and that. That continues to, to become intensified with the work with two of our, our TOSSAs. They are focusing on three schools. And really primarily the three schools being Hoover, Garfield and Taft. And have met with the principals of the sites, are working with the teachers with the sites, have set aside professional development time already at the sites. And are going to be working side by side with the teachers in the classrooms, doing model lessons, helping them with planning, really with the focus on EL student. Language development and content area knowledge, which we think will have an impact on the test scores that you just saw. So that's all taking place also next year. Goal three is reading math. You've heard a lot about reading. Goal three is reading math, and you've heard a lot about reading and math, particularly for the primary grades. And so we've got, again, some, some highlights that you just pretty much saw in Jenny's presentation. We have purchased the materials. The materials are arriving for K through five, probably in a couple of weeks, and will be delivered to the school sites. Carla from the IMC is planning to distribute all the materials, so they will all be in the teachers' classrooms when they return, and will be ready for their professional development, which will be that first week of August when they come back. We will be running a math pilot in grades six through eight, which Kendall is running and is already starting to recruit the teachers for that. And then that information will be brought to you about the, the different kinds of curriculum that they are going to be piloting. We continue to add a couple of extra reading specialists at our priority sites to support that tier two, tier three reading. But we really, really believe that as the tier one gets stronger in the reading instruction, that the need for sending students out for additional support will diminish, because a lot more of their foundational skills, needs for learning how to, to read will be taking place in the classroom. You've heard a lot about the professional development that took place last week. We had Janet came and visited and can talk a little bit about that if she wants, about what she saw in the different classrooms. We got fantastic feedback from, from all of the teachers who also spent. Tuesday was a full day, Wednesday and Thursday were half-days of training, but they had optional half-days of planning time to look at the assessments, to look at the materials, and then to do some planning with their grade-level teams for next year, and the majority of people stayed to do that. So they're, they're ahead of the game in getting ready to come back in the fall for teaching reading. And as you know, we did that in, for English, and we also did that for Spanish reading. And so, and then we have purchased the materials for the large and small group reading instruction in both English and Spanish. So as you looked at the LCAP, you saw that there were some schools that were called out as being our target schools, as being the higher number of percentage of our unduplicated pupils, which, as you know, our, our English learners are low-income and foster youth students. And here they are by school. Most updated information that we have is like just from a few days ago, the percentages of students who meet the criteria. And so you can see the span that we have in our district, and you can also see why we target Hoover, Garfield, MIT, Taft, and Roosevelt for the majority of our additional services that come from the LCAP. And this is a summary of our funding, which you'll be hearing about from Rick. But we gladly spent the money that we needed to spend on our unduplicated pupils and our school sites and met our, our, our minimum expectation of a percentage of money to spend and actually went over it a little bit. And then this is the list of what those actions are that are considered contributing to the unduplicated pupil support. And this doesn't give all of the write-up. The write-ups, of course, are, are in the LCAP. But this is a summary for goal one, what the items are, and then for goal two and for goal three. And so our next steps are to adopt the LCAP next week and then submit the LCAP to the Senate. Oh, that's a typo. It's not the Santa Clara County Office. The San Mateo County Office of Ed for approval. That's a little bit of a Freudian slip for me there. And then that's. If you have some questions.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and start. You know, I was on the LCAP committee, so I went to the four stakeholder meetings along with David. And I, I always found them really to be engaging conversations. Everyone really, you know, all the stakeholders kind of participated in the goal setting and looking at the data. So I thought that was really neat. Thank you, of course, for putting together this plan, yet, yet another plan that you're, you're always seem to be putting stuff together. And, and that's, that's helpful. I'm glad to hear about it. I guess I didn't catch on the first time reading through it about an expanded elective, so I'll be needing to hear about that in the fall. One of the things I remember from this year is just all the opportunities that students actually got to perform for their families because of the electives. We saw the music program just a couple of weeks ago, and that was awesome. And so many families there. And I was thinking about this when we were talking about family engagement. There's so many different ways that families can engage with the school, and that was a really neat one. Or like at the Kennedy musical, they had the dance elective actually perform on opening night. And the drama teacher, the drama and dance elective teacher was saying, most of these kids didn't even want to take dance as an elective. They were just kind of placed into it, the way their schedule worked. And they were amazing, right? Like they've got up there. They were, I mean, they were really, I thought it was a great dance program. So I think, yeah, I'm hoping that expanding those brings out not just engagement from the, the students, but also gives them unique opportunities to perform for their families and brings the whole community together as they did before. So that'll be fun to, to hear about there. There are some nuggets in there that, you know, we just don't talk about enough about. I think it was something like 8,000 families served from Second Harvest Food Bank and by the services that we provide. I mean, the wraparound services that the school is providing through, obviously through the community schools, but in addition to partnerships with places like the Second Harvest Food Bank. You know, it just, it, it's remarkable. It's, there's, there's clearly a lot of need in a lot of different places. And that's contributing to probably disparate outcomes and some of the structural bias, the structural equities that exist in not just the school system, but in, in society as a whole. And it's nice to see those, the kind of impact that schools can have and that we're able to have in there. You know, and paired with that is kind of like the newcomer, the family-centered responses. And just seeing how positive those were and, you know, and the contributions for, for those families. It might be interesting to actually, if we were going to do a segment of the data on engagement, see how, you know, what that segment says, because those surveys are 95% positive. And particularly for newcomers, about how helpful it was for, I mean, you're coming to a whole new country, a new school system, and trying to figure it out and having that kind of resource there. I think really being able to fund those things are, are really nice. You know, and 55% of the English learners' progress performance status is pretty high. I know that we, we got penalized for not having that, was it 100% participation? I can't remember. Yeah, we missed it by participation, so we got penalized on the dashboard. But actually, the performance there is pretty positive. So it's clear that, you know, again, some, some of the things that are being proposed and that have been funded and being able to continue to fund through the LCAP are, are working. And it'll be nice to see about the changes that are happening that the LCAP is allowing us to fund. We already talked about the new newcomer program and how that's running, the new. You know, again, we talked about with the I-ready for the performance there. So thanks for putting it together. I'm looking forward to year three. I know that the outcomes that were set three years ago are, are probably no longer quite realistic from where we are in year two. So it'll be nice to, you know, maybe in our, our strategy session on Friday, start thinking like, what is success for some of these programs? And what will it look like? So that we can all sort of say, yeah, this is kind of what we're really aiming for. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Liz. Once again, you are so good at putting together plans. And I have to say, I was a little bit sad, because this is my first year. I was not on the LCAP committee. I bet, actually, it was the board member from the very founding of when we had LCAPs come to fruition, but I gave it up. So my dear colleague could learn. I mean, you know, learn more. Anyway, so, so I missed it. But I will say the LCAP, well-written this year. I mean, I felt like I was at some of the meetings where I really got a description of the sorts of activities you're talking about, the data that you used. There was so much good kind of programming and support for our students and families identified in this LCAP. And I think it really shows the priorities of our district. So I would say if someone was sort of new to our district, I think kind of reading, you know, obviously, it's quite long, but, but you could, you know, the, the descriptions of some of the programs, I think, are really good. And I don't know if we have it like that in other places. I mean, I think you'd have to go to our website and, or Board Minutes or things like, you know, look at a bunch of different presentations. So I, I'm just really impressed. I, I feel like it, it really showcases a lot of the different programs. I mean, you know, you've got community school, all the professional development we've been doing with teachers, our new curriculum. You've got the MTSS, the tutoring, extended-day learning elective. I mean, really, it's all, you know, it's all there, how we're trying to support the students. So thank you. I agree with sort of where the priorities are and the amounts of money. I mean, which is basically what we're approving. So I don't really have any comments to any of that. Oh, and the, but the, the other thing, I had heard this, maybe in a, some, maybe in a, I don't know, some, some newsletter or something, but I saw it in there, the seal of biliteracy that we're doing at Kennedy now. So did we start that this year? Okay, right. I think that's great. I know that Sequoia High School has that for their Spanish program. I guess probably Woodside has a similar thing. And both my daughters got it. And it's quite a cool, you know, it's, it's a great goal to have, quite an accomplishment. And for us to be able to show that our Kennedy students are mannered immersion, I'm, I'm really excited about that. So I don't know if that was showcased. It probably was at graduation, when you were there. I was not this year. But I, anyway, I think that's great for our multilingual learners, which we also kind of highlight in LCAP. So very proud of all the work that you guys did. Thank you, Mike, and thank you, David. I know it's a lot of extra meetings. So thank you.
I don't have anything additional to add that you guys haven't already said, but thank you very much, Liz and, and your team for all the work that's gone into this. I sat on the LCAP many years ago when it was, I think, a lot more meetings, a lot more time-consuming, but.
Meetings almost every, well, we would have them every.
All day, all day meetings.
Every month. Trying to figure it all out, right?
But the document has evolved so much over time. Yeah, Wendy. Sorry, is that like PTSD? The document has evolved so much over time, and it's just, I really appreciate all the work that's gone into it. And thank you for showing me around on the PD day. I was going to talk about then the board reports, because I think it's the only thing I have to add for that. So I'll hold on to that one. Thanks.
Thanks for offering me an opportunity to be on LCAP, and it was great to be able to sit with Mike on that. And I think most of my input that I had was put into the document, so not a huge number of comments there. Awesome work. Thank you. Just one question on the presentation was the goal number two with the 188 students that are reclassified in under five years. That what I would love to see would be the denominator of how many students total were still in EL after five years of being in the district, because that gives me a sense, right? Because the goal would be, when the student comes to us as an English language learner and is with us for five years, at the end of five years, the dream would be 100% of those programs are. And so we have got the numerator of 188, which is great, but what's the denominator? Thanks.
And I think my only question for you, and again, thank you, everything, I mean, everyone said what I was also thinking. However, when we talk about the tutors, since we're moving to a different curriculum, and obviously they use their own, how are we going to see if there's going to be, I don't, do I want to use the word discrepancy versus our curriculum and theirs, or are they're going to be sharing ours? Just so, you know, are students going to be under the, you know, on the same page and not get lost?
So I think that's a great question, and I will follow up with Leila, the head of the CAP organization, about what their, their routines are to see that they are aligned with the routines that our teachers have just been taught. They primarily work with older kids, and so where they have seen their greatest successes within kids' grades six through eight. And so we've been talking about really prioritizing maybe grades four, five, six, seven, eight. And so those will be grades that don't have as much of the work going on that we learned this past week. And so it will supplement and probably really support the kids who are not getting as much of that instruction as the kids who are getting in K through three. But we will check to make sure that the, the, the way that they're teaching is not in conflict with the way that we're teaching as well.
Great. And I think just, just to throw it out there, I was kind of having a conversation with Dr. Baker. And one of the things that I am curious is how much, if you want to say parent engagement, how much do we actually, how, how much do we speak to our parents for them to actually understand how they can help their student? You know, and I think that's a big progress. If they, the more they know, the more they can help their student.
So we know that this is a huge component that we have not addressed well for a really long time. And so this is something that we're developing some trainings that we can take to schools for like parent nights and as well as provide materials so that parents could, if they don't have materials at home that are decodable, easy-reader kinds of things, that they'll have things that they can take home, but they will be teaching parents the same kinds of routines that the teachers are using in class. So that is a plan for the fall.
Right. Thank you, because I, I think that's very important. You know, again, I mean, I, I was telling Dr. Baker, my kid is already leaving, right? I had two kids, but I think too, a lot of the times you hear is like, your student's doing good, but how good are they? And how can they progress? And sometimes maybe we just don't ask the correct questions, because we feel they're doing good, but maybe they need a little extra. And how do we help them as parents? So thank you. I, I think everyone's, everyone's doing a good job. You know, big kudos to all the teachers that were in the PD, you know, thanks, because it's a lot, right? After the fact, after their school year is over, and so we all appreciate their, their effort to do well so that our kids can be, the students can do better. So thank you.
Great job, LCAP. It's got, it's come a long ways. The very, very first one I did, that was nine years ago, and it was totally different for those of you that, who was in the, because Lisa, maybe you were. Yeah. Probably, probably been you and Shelley, because that was, that was nine years ago. And that was, it was nothing compared to, it just, that was the first one.
On the committee? Because, no, well, I was there as a parent. I think it was Hillary and you.
Oh, Hillary. It was Hillary. It was.
What a change. It's come a long way, a long way. Thank you, Liz and your team. It's, it's good. Yeah.
Well, we also, we also, we have Jenny sorting through.
Right, right, right. Reams of data. And the charts, and the charts. What a.
Right?
Yep.
Oh, my gosh. Well, never mind. This is great.
All right. Before we move on, I think in life, it's been a public case, so no one can challenge us that we should call for public comment.
Yeah.
Even if there is not, we've made the effort.
Yeah, thank you. So moving on to 10.2, and since. Okay, so tell me.
Are there any public, is there any public comment regarding?
So are, is there any public comments for those of you on Zoom? And if so, I guess, you can raise your hand, please.
Right.
Okay, so this hearing will be closed, and then we're moving on to 10.2, which is the public hearing for Rebel City 2023-24 proposed budget. And then do I ask the question now before the? Yeah, okay.
Good evening, everyone. It's always fun following an LCAP presentation. And I will say that it was, does a very good job of spending her LCAP dollars. And then some at times, but we'll go on. Any budget in, in a school district is interesting and unique with different challenges and/or opportunities facing it. If we go back through, you know, the last 10 to 15 years with the Great Recession and then the revision to school funding from revenue limit to LCFF going into, is the gap going to be funded this year, which I know was probably a question asked at this meeting every year with the governor's proposed budget. And then going into COVID, where there was an influx of money. And now seemingly going back to quote-unquote "normal circumstances." But yeah, once again, we're faced with unique situations where we're coming off of amounts of money that school districts aren't used to getting over the course of a couple of years, especially quickly with limited resources already, much-needed funds to implement programs and services that were needed that previously couldn't be paid for. And now that money is expiring, we run into a whole different set of circumstances with keeping some of those very valued services that have proven, as Liz has shown tonight through data, throughout the course of this year, have been beneficial to our organization. So with that, this budget has presented its own challenges looking forward. And I will say that. And I will say that, you know, there's a lot of information in the budget. And there's a lot of information that's going to change, you know, over the course of the next three, six, nine, 12 weeks. As we close the books for 2223, go through the unaudited actual process. And then do what I suspect will be several large revisions to the budget that we are presenting tonight as the proposed budget for 2324. So going through the slide deck, I'm not going to read all of these slides. A lot of this is here for the public who who want to look at this and read this. But we are at budget adoption, the bright red area on the right side of the screen. You know, still waiting for the governor to sign the enacted state budget for 2324, which will shore up some of the money that we think we're getting, but we may not be getting, but we might get that Liz has already spent. So we have to take that into account as we go forward. And so we'll be looking to, if necessary, come back in 45 days after the inactive state budget with a budget update or revision as needed. Then and audited actuals, which I just spoke briefly about coming back in September. Then going into the first interim report, which this year all first interim reports are important and special, but this one takes on different meaning with some of the things that are in the proposed budget of what we need to do as an organization to be solvent for the current year and our two out years. I'll skip this slide. It's just more legal legal information about why we're doing the budget. And that it has to follow the LCAP both at the public hearing and adoption next week. So going into the 2324 budget and some of the, I'll say, major assumptions that we look at. You know, district enrollment, we are still projecting to decline. We're going to look at that closer now that we have this year's data with student enrollment and in October with the 2324 data after COVID is essentially over. It's not having the same impact that it did in 2021 and 2122 for sure. We are projecting right now that ADA will go up. This was much more important as an LCFF district, but still it's important because we know that kids perform better when they're in school, right? Test scores go up when they're in school. So we still want to monitor this and be able to share this with the board as well as the community. And our school sites are unduplicated pupil percentage, our UPP is trending a little bit down over the next couple of years. And we are utilizing the three year average that was enacted during COVID. That's still continuing going forward. Our local control funding formula, you can see the big COLA of 8.22% this year. School Services of California, along with LAO. And I think perhaps even UCLA have come out with 3.94 and 3.294 are two out years. So we're using those numbers for the purposes of this budget. Last year, there was an augmentation that gave COLA plus augmentation of just about 13.3%. There is no augmentation for next year or the two out years at this point. CalSTRS employer rate is staying the same at 19.1%. That's by statute. They can't raise that without legislature legislative action. Unfortunately, CalPERS is not the same way, where you can see the contribution to the employer's rate continuing to rise up to 28.3. I will make note that that is almost a full percent of where it was projected about three or four months ago. So it's still going up, but not quite to the same level that was projected. But with that employer rate increase right now, our driven cost on a classified employee is about 35% of salary compared to about 24% for a certificate unit member. We used 1.5% for step and column increases. And we were semi conservative at 2.75 with property tax. That's that's one of the assumptions I think will change when we get our preliminary taxes for 2324, pollinate tax projections for 2324. So that would be an adjustment that we would make, of course, along 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 the fall as we go through that. And I'll talk about the impact of that in a few slides. So going into funds 01 or our general fund on these slides is our estimated actuals for 2223, which will change by the time we get to September 15th and the unaudited actuals. And then our proposed budget for 2324. And something looks a little wrong. We'll come back to this. I think it might be in another slide. Showing the the difference with LCFF sources going up with the COLA as well as federal other state revenues and local revenues going down. We're not seeing the influx of money from COVID. Right? So federal revenues are returning back to normalish numbers, right? Along with other state revenues. Yeah, there is a number missing on here. It's 14,300,000. And that's the transfer in from RDA that we'll talk about. So I hear the sources of revenue in here. You can see on here I have the correct number. I apologize for that. I was making some cleanup today on formatting. And that one didn't automatically come in as expected, so I apologize. But you see total revenue of 131 million and that includes 14.3 million dollars of RDA transfer in. You can still see that our LCFF base or property taxes are our biggest source of revenue for the district. There is a pie graph illustrating that of our Fund One revenue. Our expenditures, unlike our revenue going down, our expenditures are going up slightly through our process. You know, we did have the settlement with RCTA and RCA that is in here. We have movement of positions. Some have been decreased. Others have been added in certain areas, especially special ed. There's been a lot of movement with moving some positions into the LCAP for those needed services that we didn't want to eliminate that were previously funded with COVID. There's been a lot of movement for sure, especially with that. And coordination through the different departments with human resources, ed services, fiscal services, and trying to make sure that we have all that accounted for correctly has been a tremendous lift for the staff of all three departments. And something that we'll be reviewing after budget adoption to make sure that we didn't miss anything or incorrectly overstate something in some of these expenditure numbers. But with all the eyes that have looked at it at this point, we feel confident at this point, we are close to correct on this going into the 2324 school year. It would be minor adjustments. I don't think major ones at this point. Here's the breakdown of expenditures by category, certificate, classified employees benefits obviously make up about 78, 79. I calculated right before I came in, but of our total expenditures for Redwood City School District. Our ending fund balances for funds 01, the online G at the bottom. You can see that we're going down about $10 million from our beginning fund balance to our end fund balance. That's all of those changes that I was speaking to, the settlements, the movement of employees from COVID funded to general funded contributions to special education and other programs that we're offering that make that up. And this is something we also talked about a little bit at second interim is as we went through working through negotiations for those two labor groups that where we would be at this point in time and that we would have decisions to make in the future to offer offer what we did and get the settlements that we did at that point, noting that we still have not settled with CSEA. So going into multi-year projections for funds 01, and this is fund 01 only. You can see the correct revenue on this slide. And then our projected out with increases to the LCFF and taking into account what we know for federal and other state revenues. Expenditures based on what we know now, what we expect to not be there in a year based on either one-time funding or planned planned. No, I'm not using that. Those those types of programs and services anymore have been adjusted and then accounted for inflation and COLA for those both salaries, book supplies and services and operating expenditures. You can see in italics under expenditures, the fiscal stabilization plan. That is at this point an unidentified fiscal stabilization plan. Right now sitting at about minus $11 million or $11 million in cuts for the 2425 school year. And 13.75 million for 2526. Now, with that being said, if all of the cuts right now for 2425 are ongoing cuts, that would reduce the cuts for 2526 down to 2.75 million. If there are one-time cuts, those don't go on, it would be the full 13.75 million. I do expect this number to change. I expect it to go lower through the close of the books, thrown audit actuals. And as we prepare for the first interim report, we'll talk a little bit more about the fiscal stabilization plan and what that entails when we get later on in the presentation. But this is where we're at right now in order to show fiscal solvency out here.
Hey, Rick, can I just comment? Yeah. So you know, thank you for putting this all together and also for meeting with me earlier. I just wanted to comment you on the fiscal stabilization plan, I think similar to the New York Times article. There was another couple of articles. I don't remember if it was Ed Source or who it was, but yeah, just talking about. I mean, across the United States, school districts are seeing this fiscal cliff drop. And in California particularly because we had California stimulus and we had federal stimulus. And so although it doesn't necessarily make it easier, we're not alone in all of this. And I think school districts up and down the state will need to be looking at what are the programs they're providing. With the extra stimulus money, we will to provide more for our students. So we need to be looking at what of those really worked well and then trading off with maybe some other things that we can think about not doing right. But I do think it's important for the community to to see that, that we will have to do some kinds of budget cuts. Some of that may happen on the natural through attrition. You know, lower school size population. But clearly you're not going to get $11 million from on the natural. So we will have to be looking hard at that. And I know there's always questions that come up. Well, how can I have some opportunity for input and comment? And I I know that actually we have a slide, I think, coming up where we talk about, but in the fall, just for those on the call or who those watch the video, there will be a lot of opportunities for community members to, you know, teachers, staff, parents and other community members to comment. So I just, so nobody gets too alarmed that, you know, the horse has lost the barn. This is just the beginning. And so we'll be having those conversations in the fall. Yeah.
Yeah, I think just to tag on to that, I think it's important to say at this point, it's unidentified fiscal stabilization measures. There have been no identified cuts up this.
Right. Yeah, thank you.
So this is the multi-year projection with components of the ending fund balance. You can see that with the fiscal stabilization plan measures and the transfer in of RDA funds. We are meeting our reserve for economic uncertainty of 3% in each of the three years. We are not meeting the board mandated reserve. And then unfortunately, unfortunately for programs, the restricted ending balance can't be used for that, right? So it is earmarked for specific programs or services on a year-to-year basis. Looking at the ending fund balance of other funds, 12 through 40. This is our estimated actuals at 2223 and what we project at the end of 2324. Important to note on here, the question I would have is fund 21, knowing that we're in the process of the sale of those bonds. Those bonds actually will close next week. And when we book revenue, this will be updated to add approximately 89,600,000 to fund 21. So that would be either at the 45 day budget revision or and or the unaudited actuals presentation. So Lisa mentioned this, the fiscal stabilization plan process this summer in July and early August, Dr. Baker, myself and others in the district will finalize that process of what it looks like to be ready to go right when school starts and teachers, students and parents come back. So we'll have a plan in place to meet with various stakeholder groups, including bringing back information to the board during the fall. We'll take the stakeholder input, the board input that will be compiled to make recommendations to the superintendent. The superintendent can then forward on those recommendations, change those recommendations, modify or add his own recommendations to the plan. They'll be presented to the board where each of you will have that same opportunity to add to modify, accept or reject the recommendations that are presented from that with whichever one through however many are approved, those will be implemented into the first interim report at the December meeting. That if we have enough that between, I'll say the savings that we get through the close of the books and audit actuals. Other measures that just naturally happen between now and then, and then identified fiscal stabilization measures. Two things I expect to happen, one will still be able to certify as positive, knowing that we have that. If not, we would be qualified. And then at second interim, we will return back to positive when we finalized our fiscal stabilization plan process. And that doesn't mean that everything is enacted and all the cuts have been made. It means there's a plan over the course of the next two years to meet those goals. And then we move on from there and continue doing what we need to do at that point to ensure that that process one is fluid and two can be implemented as we move through second interim and then into budget development for the 2425 school year, which seems scary to say right now. But you know, it's a process that I I've been through before. It's not easy and it's not always fun. But as long as we get the input and we can be able to talk about it as a group and with the community. It's something where we can make this happen in order for fiscal solvency for our district.
One other comment that we didn't talk about is in addition to budget cuts, you look could look for revenue generation. So that of course, you know, is another part of that. And I know in the past, we've you know, gone out to philanthropists or looked at foundations or out to our community. So again, we're not going to get to the total 11 million through that, but I do want to just make sure the community knows that, you know, there's opportunities for revenue generation as well. And certainly if anybody out there listening or has friends who are listening. You know, we've been very successful. Dr. Baker and Liz and others have been successful in getting money. So anyway. Well, we'll have a better idea once we know what we're talking about.
So we still need to monitor the California enacted budget when it's signed. We're still getting mixed signals on the economy. We still have shortages unless Wendy's filled out their position since last week. As I mentioned, we still have CSEA negotiations to finalize for the 2223 school year. I think this could be on any slide on certain education funding in California. Every year. And then, of course, we're going to continue to look at enrollment because that's going to help drive some of the decisions that we have to make going through the next fiscal year. 45 day budget revision, unaudited actuals in September, fiscal stabilization plan development. And then bringing back for plan approval and the first interim report in December. And then bringing back for plan approval and the first interim report in December. I will also note. There will, I don't believe any numbers have changed in the budget since the posting. Of the materials, there has been significant cleanup on the budget book for. Formatting issues and some misses on that with some years and stuff as we're trying to automate that process for staff as well as. Click an update button and it doesn't always work exactly. How we wanted to, there'll be one minor revision. With revenue and expenditures for the district as a whole on the budget overview for parents. That I've already sent over to Liz through our document tracking service. That had no impact on the LCAP per se, but just for the budget overview for parents of what our actual. Projected revenues and expenditures are. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Or any comments.
If I just go ahead and jump right in, all right, thanks, Rick, in your office for putting together the budget book, the presentation, the multi-year projections. I wanted to ask real fast about the fiscal stabilization plan. Because the the first step is to create the process and then we have the next steps talking about. You know, it's going to be developed in September and October, November. That means the process will be developed in August, I think that's what you had said, but I just wanted to clarify, so we'll develop that in August and then in September, we'll execute on that process. There's steps two, three and four, okay, cool. And our goal then is to. That we're trying to be. We're looking at trying to be qualified for the. Twenty six, twenty seven, whatever is going to become the third year out from next year's budget, right? Because it looks like already twenty five, twenty six, okay, yeah.
And our goal is to be positive, actually.
Positive, yeah, positive, yeah, not qualified, positive, yeah, thanks. Wrong word. No, but. Yeah, okay, I mean, we're we're coming off of just like unprecedented one time funding that's drying up. You know, I think every time we've passed a budget in the last. Couple of years, at least since I've been on the board. We've said, I know, like, I I hope this continues on. We knew it wasn't going to, so I I can't say that we're again surprised by the fact that it's there. I think this is, you know. It's the responsible thing that we have to do, the the steps that you've laid out in the process to get to it seems like a responsible way to. Address it, you know, and we'll, we'll, we'll see what the numbers end up actually being for it. I want to, I appreciate actually coming in with the more conservative. Statement there in the budget so that we can sort of frame our thinking around that. And hopefully not have to have such difficult conversations, but still difficult ones. So I I think that'll be, that was a good way to frame it. One other comment on the budget book, the I really appreciated the narratives of the governor's budget. The changes that were made, you know, there's a lot of different sort of, I guess, you know. There was a swing away from categorical funding now or back swinging back towards it or whatever. There, there was a lot of descriptions about what changed in the budget and sort of. How that impacted Redwood City, I thought that was a great narrative at the beginning. I don't know who wrote it, if it was you or someone from your office or or how that was put together, but thank you for putting that in, it really helped contextualize. But you know, all the, all the fun, all the, you know, looking at all the funds that came later and the changes that are put in there, so I just wanted to acknowledge that was really appreciated. And of course, again, you know, thanks for putting it together.
Thank you.
Um, I just want to ditto what Mike said, the the description, again, it's kind of similar to the LCAP, it really gives a narrative to help. The reader read sort of what the numbers mean and so so thank you for that. And thank you for all your work on the budget, I know we got to meet earlier, so I had some specific questions that I asked. You know, some of which of course is looking at the multi-year, how are we going to get there, of course, we always know that things change, so the third year is sort of some guidance. To give you some direction, but there's no crystal ball, so we don't know exactly what that's going to look like from a property tax funding basis, from a enrollment projection. All of that, you know, the one thing to kind of follow up on what Mike said and what we talked about is. You know, the last few years with the extra stimulus money that we've gotten, we've been. In my opinion, and I think in our opinion, we've used it very wisely as a school district and we put it in some really important areas for students. That's what we were asked to do, we were asked to support the students and families, so all the mental health counselors and clinicians. You know, the extra reading resource specialists, I mean, the list just goes on of how we spent the money and I think. You know, it felt like we were full and fair funded in a way, right? And we had talked, that was a goal of ours for the last twenty years, right, to get to full and fair funding, so we saw what that looks like, so. It is a shame that we're going to lose that, you know, nineteen or twenty million. A year was very nice. So I think there's an opportunity in it, you know, as we think about the fiscal stabilization plan and I know, you know. Dr. Baker, you know, I've had a lot of conversations about this and I know you're interested as well as, how do we look at some of the extra? Programming we were able to offer and supports. To really look at the metrics around those and how we think they they did supporting students, which ones we want to try to continue. And in addition to looking, you know, if there's opportunities elsewhere to make some modifications, so we can keep some of the new stuff. Also, you know, there's a narrative and a pitch there to our community and again to some of the people who have supported us in the past. You know, here's some things we'd like to continue and how do we make that happen, so I hope that the conversation that we have in the fall. Allows for that as well, I know it will. And maybe there's some opportunities, you know, as we get input from school sites. To have kind of those more open forums where we can really have those conversations. And anyway, I think the budget looks good, I don't really have any specific changes or comments around that. And appreciate all the work there.
Thank you for. Your work, it sounds like we're going to have some exciting conversations in the fall about which pockets we. Find eleven million dollars in, hopefully it's less than that, but keep this posted.
I don't have any, any questions, but just thank you for all your work on this and everything that you and your team does to keep us. Fiscally solvent. You know, it was mentioned already that I don't think any of this is a surprise to us, we knew. That we're going to be looking at making some cuts. Some of us have been there before. And we'll just have to buckle up and do it again. I think our community has been really good at giving us input in the past and in the last few years, so hopefully they'll turn out to. To give us some feedback on that, too, that would be helpful.
And again, I think we can't say enough thank you, I I actually was going to say. I'm really thankful that you came into Redwood City, you make things so. Easy on the eye, even like your presentation, you seen those vivid colors and I, you know. Besides that, obviously you're looking at the big numbers, so I really appreciate it. And again, when we talk about the uncertain. Certain funding. In California, I guess we have to also think that we as a district. Will continue to be basic aid and so that's actually a plus and so I really appreciate it. And again, I don't have any other comments other than, you know, thank you and obviously we're. Moving in the in the right direction and hopefully again, those numbers. Would, we would get better numbers, so thank you.
Rick, great job, I mean, I'm. Impressing the manner and how we're going to move forward with the physical, you know, stabilization plan and so. I know we're starting a lot earlier than we had planned and. Not only will, you know, involve our. Community, our school communities and beyond, but also board members, so. When we start having those meetings, it's my hope and we'll talk about this more a bit on Friday. To have you at those meetings also to listen and. I'm pleased with the manner in which we're going, I'm very happy that we were able to to find Rick and he likes working here, he really does. And we like Rick too, so it works out really well both ways, so. We'll move forward and we've, we've been through this before, it's not, this is, this is not our first rodeo on this either. So. David's first rodeo, but the rest of us have, you know. I think it's Mike's first. Mike, he was out there before, but his first time.
Yeah, it's funny because when I came on the board, it was two thousand and seven and I had all these hopes and dreams, all these new things I wanted to do as a new school board member and then two thousand eight hit. So I, I only saw like just for the first, what, five or six years of downturn. And then COVID hit and then, I mean, the stimulus money has been nice, you know, it really has been, so. I mean, it's interesting because the reason we're all faces is they told us to spend the money.
Right.
On traditionally ongoing things for students, right, to hire up staff and stuff, so. Everybody's kind of dealing with this as as a result, what do we do, right?
Yeah, exactly, and I'm glad it were, we'll look at metrics and one thing with the. The funding that we are getting from the state through the county in regard to helping with, you know, mental health. Which is going to be really good, that that's going to be really good because we can now start to. Train our mental health clinicians in keeping. I don't want to call it, keep a track of who they're taking care of and how we can build back the state. To get paid peer clinicians, so that's something that's coming. Fourth with this new money that we're getting, so that's a plus, not to say it's major dollars that'll do. That will have an impact on all our clinicians to to continue to pay them, but at least for a good many of them, so. It's good to get into that realm of funding, which we were not. Previously, and thanks to Anna Paola and for helping me do that, so that's great, so. We have some work to do, but I'm, I'm. Thinking positive, it's, it'll be, it'll, it will be fine, we've made, we've gone through this before. You know, yeah, we'll have a really good process.
Agreed.
We'll be talking more about it and involving more staff and yourselves and community members.
Is there a way to better like let the community know this, this thing is coming?
Well, there will be definitely a community outreach through, you know. My wonderful community, communities that go out, you know, to make sure that everybody reads that, but definitely the principals be really involved. In getting their own communities involved too, that's the other, you know, they have a pulse on. Who's doing what in their communities and I'm really going to tap into them to really.
Makes sense, it's just light attendance tonight and this is going to turn into big stuff, so.
Right.
But I mean, I would. The Great Recession, literally the state took money away from us, they already promised that and we were state funded, I mean, it was intense, right? Because we had already stacked up for the year and then they, they, they did like six, ten million dollars in budget cuts like in a year. And yet you couldn't, it was crazy, so, so we have, so I look at this and I think, wow, look at all this time we have the plan, right? I mean, it's just a totally different ballgame, so not to say that it, it's never easy, but. We'll have the luxury of time, yeah.
And yeah. And I think part of the plan is, I mean, it is, one of the steps is getting stakeholder input, so I think developing that plan in August is when we'll see how, how it's going to reach out to it. It's got to be a critical part of it, of getting, getting the community and input involved, so I, you know.
Well, great, so then with that. Were you on?
Would you call for a public comment?
Yes. And so is, are there any public comment at this time and if so, can you guys please raise your hand if you're on Zoom? Okay, seeing none, we're going to go ahead and close this public. Hearing on the proposed budget. And so we're moving on to the agenda item. Ten point three, which is twenty twenty three, twenty four, statement of recents for reserves and excess of the minimum state recommended level.
Yeah, I don't have any comments, makes sense to me, thanks.
Is there any public comment on this item? And if so, again, if you're on Zoom, maybe you can raise your hand. Okay, seeing none, we're going to go ahead and close this. Thank you, and moving on to item twelve, board and superintendents report.
I don't have anything to report this week.
So I just have the PD Dave mentioned that, that Liz mentioned. I stopped by on Thursday morning and. There were, first of all, there was a lot of teachers there, which was really great to see, and they were really engaged and. Super positive about the the training that they were going through and had been going through and really enthusiastic about the presenters. Each of the different groups, there were three groups, K one. Two, three and four, five, yeah, so I caught them midday on day three, so there were some glassy eyes like. Looking forward to stopping it again in August and seeing how it's going. Let's see. So one of the things that I I pointed out to Liz when we were there. In the K one group, the presenter was talking about, so they were, he was talking about an assessment on how to group. Students and he was talking about how, you know, when he was a teacher, he'd always have, you know, groups of six or, you know, whatever and. And this assessment is helping to group them. Really by, you know, what letter sounds do they know or, you know, whatever, depending on the grade. And so that might be, you know, three students in one group or, you know, six students in another group and whatnot, and I said to Liz, it's so easy to get stuck into. Well, we do it this way because we've always done it this way. It makes sense that we just put all of our students into, you know, neat little groups of five or six students and. And it's going to look different for every class and every grade, every year, so that was just interesting to see, I think. And I think I mentioned this to Liz, there may be a little bit of. Mixed messages about whether or not the assessment is going to be used. Across the district if it's going to be mandated. From what I hear from teachers, there may be mixed messaging there, so maybe in August we can make that clear. Okay, great, but I was really excited about it, I definitely recommend if you can make it in August, stop by. Thank you, Liz, for your time on that, too, I appreciate it.
Yeah, so I did, I did want to just, the Redwood City Together, just to mention a little bit more. Raphael and his staff have just done an incredible job this last year and I think are really delivering with the collaborative. We've added a lot of folks to the collaborative as well. I will send you the link for the end of report, I just have one copy, but I would recommend that at a minimum, just kind of skim it. I think it gives you an idea of all the various things that we're working on with our partners in Redwood City and North Fair Oaks for the benefit of youth and families. And there's a little bit of data for the data geeks in the house. And. I think there's a real desire to continue to to kind of work. Together on those things where we know we can see collective impact and so I think Raphael's doing a great job and like I said, he's been quite the rainmaker. Bringing in additional resources to our community, which is something new and different from a few years ago, so anyway, really great. Miss you, Janet, Cecilia's been a great addition. Too bad we, you know, we couldn't all go because it actually is is a worthwhile group of individuals, okay, that's it. Oh, and I guess we're still cheering the the whole thing through the fall, we found out. I thought it was just for the school year, but anyway. So thank you for your leadership on that, John.
And then, of course, I attended the Redwood City Together as well. It's been an honor and actually I really. I mean, they're doing great things for our community, so and again, with Raphael being. The lead, I mean, I've told him many times, he is like awesome, motivates his employees. Pumps us up as we're in the meetings, right, I mean, I don't know, he's. For sure, yes, I'm super. Awesome person. And so, and one of the things that I wanted to mention that I forgot to mention, that I had attended the Familias Unidas graduation through Zoom. So they had a Zoom and then an in person that I was not able to attend and so that was nice to actually. Be there and then we heard from an engineer, she's a Latina engineer from. Intel, actually, and so she was actually telling her story how she. Became an engineer and as a woman and a Latina and how. She was actually, you know. she's at a position where there's a lot more white male. And so a lot of her first ideas were not really taken seriously until she mentioned something to her boss and then they actually said, oh, she's smart, right? And so all the parents that were there were actually like, thank you, commenting on the chat how like, thank you for being here because then that gives us a positive, you know, input and again, empowers them and their students that were there listening so that they actually can think outside the box and can say, I could be there. And she's just here in Silicon Valley, right? So that was awesome. So.
That's great. Yeah. And that's it.
I was also at the Redwood City together and we, you know, yeah, Raphael, I totally agree. It's, it's great. And we did his performance review and so forth. So, yeah. So he signed and he met with me and signed and so sent it over, sent it out to Melissa so Melissa can now go through the city with it. Yeah.
And then one last thing, talking about Redwood City together, one of the things that we talked about is that he could perhaps come in and, and present at one point. So maybe that's something that we can look forward to, you know, sometime and yeah.
Yes. Yeah. So we were thinking maybe in the fall, like what's.
Okay. And then moving forward to item 13, information on Sematil County Investment Fund. Are there any questions? Okay. Great. Thank you. Okay. So any correspondence?
I think the whole board is in receipt of a email from a parent who wishes their child could get into North Star. That is.
Did you guys respond back?
Sir responded.
Great. So moving on to item 15, other business or suggested items for future agenda.
Yeah. So if you could add the Redwood City together, Evelyn, I don't know if you keep track of that, but somehow you guys could slot that in when it seems appropriate. That'd be great.
Just as we're wrapping up the year here, it, it occurred to me something that has come up in a number of different meetings, this discussion about how at the beginning of the school year in particular, we could conscript a bunch of parent volunteers and explore doing bunk bulk enrollment, do like a fingerprinting bus, like just explore a couple of different options there. And that, that always got some nods and, and here we are in the come, beginning of the next school year is, is coming up in a real hurry, not a huge number of meetings between now and then. So I, I thought I would flag like, can we, can we move that forward?
Move forward. We, we do have a contact.
Some prints up. All right.
Yeah, that'd be good because we really just have the, well, we have next week's board meeting and then the August ninth, although because, what do they call it? What do they call the maze days? Thank you. Be happening soon. So I think that's a good point. If you could just try to make that happen. Yeah. Cause I, I think we sort of all did the head nod when that came up. Cause we want to make it easy for our parents.
And the maze day is already calendered out. So.
Okay. That'd be great.
Great. Thank you.
I think if you do want one of these, just let me know and I can, okay. Want to make sure.
Okay. And then so moving on to item 16.1, changes to the board meeting calendar.
So the only correction is for the June 28th close session. Originally it's at, it's 6:00 PM. It's going to be start at 6:15. I sent an email earlier this afternoon. So yes, thank you, Dr. Baker, for the reminder. You get a chance to look at that and send, just send your response.
Well, great. Thank you. And so with that, it is 9:15. And does somebody want to make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I would like to move to adjourn the meeting.
Go ahead and use a second.
All of us in favor?
I.
Thank you.